Test.
Mr. Williamson, you ready? Ready, Andrew. All right, I'll call to order the regular Blythewood Town Council meeting. We're at the Manor. Today's Monday, October 23rd, 2023. The time is now 6:00 P. M. Mr. Urs, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilman Brock. Yes, sir. Councilman Brockman.
Present.
Councilman Griffin.
Present.
Councilman McHenry.
Present.
Mayor Franklin.
I'm here, thank you. And Mr. Urs, was tonight's agenda posted?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any points from state law? Thank you. Gentlemen, before you use tonight's agenda, if you're looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second, probably motion is seconded to approve tonight's agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, and please let us join Councilman McHenry in tonight's pledge of allegiance and invocation. Stand if you will, please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a word of prayer. Father God, we thank you for bringing us out safely this evening, and we ask that you be with us as we conduct the town's business. Father, go before us in all we do and say. Father, we, I specifically want to lift up Israel and what they have gone through here in the last few weeks and just pray that you keep your hand on the region. Father, we will have our men and women, more of our men and women in harm's way in that region, and we just pray that you watch over them and all our men and women who serve this country. And we just are ever mindful of what is going on, even though it in some ways seems a world away. Father, again, go before us in all we do and say, and this we asking your son's name. Amen.
We will continue with council members' remarks, and we'll begin on my right and your left with Councilman Don Brock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Light agenda, so I don't want to keep anybody between us and their dinner. Yesterday, Councilman Griffin and I attended the 191st anniversary of Little Zion Baptist Church. It was probably the longest service I've ever sat through, but it was a very good service. Now, we've got Halloween coming up, so I encourage everybody to be safe. We have an election tomorrow. If you live in Blythewood III, please consider coming out and voting. There is one candidate who is definitely, I believe, a very strong supporter of Blythewood. I would highly encourage everyone to come out and vote for him. We also have our election November 7th. Please come out and vote. Let's see if anything else. Oh, one last thing. I'd like to extend a small prayer to our friend and town employee, Mr. Walt. I was informed that he suffered an accident, and his place is just not quite the same without him. So Walt, if you see this and you're at home, get better soon and get back here, buddy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Pro Tem Bartman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank all those who were able to attend the ribbon cutting yesterday at the Historical Society for the new property that Mr. Nord so graciously donated. I'm sorry to say I was unable to attend because I went to a visitation for a dear friend, a classmate of the mayor's. Mr. Troy Hickson's mother passed away. So I was down at Shies for that visitation, and the service was to follow, and I just said I didn't stay for the service. But I want to lift that Hickson family up in prayer to you tonight, too. Just ask that God provide comfort for them. I want to invite you out to Sandy Level Baptist Church on Friday, the 27th, from 6:00 to 8:00 P. M. We're having our Fall Festival that night. We will have trunk or treat. We will have games. We'll have hay rides. We'll have bouncy houses, and I'm going to grill 350 hot dogs. So we're going to try to feed everybody as long as they last. But I'd also like to remind everybody that the rodeo is this weekend, 10:27 and 10:28. One of the greatest shows on dirt, so I encourage you to attend if you're able. And then again, as I mentioned last meeting on the 25th when we met, that Veterans Day is coming up, but our celebration here in the park is going to be on November the 4th, the week before, the Saturday before Veterans Day. And that program will be from 10:00 to 2:00, but the formal program will be from 1:00 to 2:00. So I encourage you to come out and support our veterans, and there's going to be six veterans receiving quilt of valor. And it's a nice way to welcome them home for their service to our country. And then, let's see, one more little housekeeping item. I think on the 25th, when the mayor was absent, and I was the presiding officer that night, I stated that the mayor had an excused absence. It seemed to cause a little controversy. So we went back and did a little research. And come to find out, we've been putting excused absences on people since July of 2022. I'm looking at the minutes that were approved by this council. On 7/25, Councilman McKendrick had an excused absence, and Councilman Bartman was available by Zoom for that meeting. Then I look over, and I can see a bunch of absences here, but I'm going to go to 5/3, which was a special call meeting. Councilman Brock was absent, and it's marked excused. 5/4, special call meeting, three presidents, Councilman Brock and Councilman Griffin, both excused absences. 5/12, special call budget workshop, Councilman Griffin, excused absence. 7/24, 23, Councilman McKendrick had an excused absence. And then Mayor Franklin had an excused absence last week. So I don't know what the controversy is. I think if we look back in some of the minutes, we talked about attendance. 3/27, 2023 was, we discussed it, acknowledged it. And then at 5/12, we discussed it, and I think if you read in the minutes, you'll see that basically all we wanted was some courtesy. Notify the presiding officer, you're not going to be here, and you're marked as excused. So I don't see where the controversy is. We, I'm looking at it right here. I see a bunch of excused absences on here, and I guess because the mayor was excused, it, you know, maybe that's a problem. But I think these minutes clear that up. So I was asked to be a big enough man and admit my mistake. So I'm going to be a big enough man, but I'm not going to admit my mistake because I didn't make a mistake. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Sloan Griffin.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon to everyone and everyone watching on YouTube. First and foremost, I want to wish my son Tristan a happy fourth birthday. Looking forward to 5, 6, 7, and 8 and beyond. Second of all, I want to, Councilman Brock alluded to it, don't forget about the town elections on November the 7th. Exercise your right to vote. Early voting started today, and we'll run through November the 4th. Also, before we get to this, I do have someone I want to recognize that's sitting in the audience. But I want to thank our town attorney for clearing up the votes, the last couple of votes on present. Looking at the ordinance, so I want to thank you for that. You got my email just as well as other council members saying thank you. And we will follow suit. I will follow suit to your guidance on future votes. Appreciate you, sir. Next, I want to yield just a little bit of time and introduce Ms. Young, who is a member of the League of Women Voters, Vote 411. And she has, she's a member, but she has a special guest, their president, here, and I want to give her the podium and then for a few moments just to introduce themselves ahead of the election.
Welcome, Ms. Young. Ladies.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, and Councilman Griffin. Thank you so much for putting us on the agenda for today. We really appreciate you. I'm Marguerite Young, and I've attended many of your meetings over the past year, and I'd like to thank you for your service here in Blythewood and all the great things that you're doing. Thank you. We are the League of Women Voters of Columbia, and we are still standing strong. We're proud to introduce you to our new president, Carrie Elliott, and she actually is going to take it from here. Here.
Say, Elliot, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. How are you? Again, my name is Carrie Elliott. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of the Columbia area, and I'm so happy to be here. I love to be amongst the folks with the work that we've done to serve the community. I'd like to talk a bit about Vote 411, which is the League of Women Voters' one-stop shop for voter information and education. This, this, this program was started two years ago, and what it is, it's a place where you can go and find out information about voter registration. Voters can find out about where the issue is, who's on their ballot, and most importantly, they can actually learn about the candidates on their ballot in our voter guide. And I want to say something that I haven't been able to say of any of the other municipal meetings. The six candidates on the ballot for November 7th here in Blythewood, every one of them responded to our request to provide information for voters about their candidates. And so we're really, really excited about that because when voters are on the ballot, voters are more likely to ask people to vote. And so we appreciate the candidates running for office here in Blythewood for taking the time to respond to the questions and making that information available to the voters. We pass our cards with our Vote 411 information. We don't say that. But you can use scanning the card and find out a plethora of information. We do this every round. So it doesn't just end with this one election. We need to be there and you want that information all the time. We report and work with all the volunteers, and we just think that this might happen. And thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. Thank you for what you all did. We really appreciate it. Everybody.
With that, Mr. Mayor, let it end my opening comments.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilman Rich McKendrick.
The advantage of being last on comments is most of the comments have already been made. So we certainly appreciate everybody joining us this evening, and those joining us by YouTube don't know what to do about the mic. Got some feedback. Again, appreciate the Vote 411 ladies being here and all you do for your volunteer hours. The election on November 7th, I spoke with the mayor, Mr. Williamson, they're going to put out a press release. Blythewood is going to have two polling stations, and early on, they were reported in the newspaper as being at the community center and here at the Manor. The two polling places are actually at the community center and at the Bethel-Hanbury Gymnasium. So literally right across the street from each other. There'll be something else put in the paper about that, but because of the population of Blythewood now, they've split that voter registration list to polling places. The community center and the Bethel-Hanbury Gymnasium. Phil Frye's in the audience. The Chamber did a great job on Oktoberfest. Phil, you had great weather, good crowd. Appreciate seeing people come out in Blythewood and have a lot to be excited about for the Fall Rodeo coming up Friday and Saturday. So again, don't forget to exercise your right to vote. Mr. Mayor, that will conclude my remarks.
Thank you. I'll make a few remarks. Mr. Williamson, if you could bring up that email and clarify what we're talking about, because I think it's precinct one votes in the, anyway, I'll let you read it. But my remarks are very brief. I just want to congratulate the Blythewood Chamber of Commerce and the town staff for putting on absolutely the best Oktoberfest I've ever seen. We even had 16 people do the three and a half mile walk, Volks march through the town. So if you have an opportunity next year to come back, come do that. Come here at 8:00 in the morning on Saturday, and we'll take you around and tell you a little bit about the history and of Blythewood and the future of Blythewood. So very beneficial. And come out, like my colleagues have said, please, tomorrow, a big vote for Senate District 19. Next Tuesday, the 7th of November is the town election. And also come and enjoy the rodeos Friday and Saturday. So look forward to seeing you out there. That concludes my remarks. I'll turn it over to Town Administrator, Mr. Williamson. Okay. Okay. So for those of you at home that didn't hear, tomorrow only precinct three will be open for voting, and I believe that's the Blythewood High School. Is that correct? Oh, the rec center. Apologies. Okay. So I'll make sure everybody gets that information. Okay, Mr. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the, for November 7th, there are three precincts. Blythewood one will be voting at the Blythewood-Hanbury Elementary School, the old gymnasium. And Blythewood two, Blythewood three, Long Creek will be voting at Blythewood Park at the rec center, and Ridgeway, the precinct called Ridgeway, which is the residents that live in Fairfield County, will also be voting at Blythewood Park. And early voting is, starts today, and you can vote down at 2020 Hampton Street. And I had a couple of other things. We recently hosted many organizations here at the Manor. In the past, it's been primarily weddings and events, but we've started to have some more meetings here at the Manor. So I just wanted to, it doesn't get talked about very much, but we had Scout Motors, Charter Next Gen, SCDOT, SCDHEC, and the State Troopers Association have all had meetings here. And I just want to share with you how much each of those have remarked to me how great it was to work with the staff, with Christie and Jana and the attendance. And that is the primary reason that they come back to have to host their events again. So it's something that just you don't, doesn't get to your radar very much, but I just want to point that out, that things move flawlessly here for a reason, and it's because of the staff here. And they're representing the town by their professionalism, and I just think they do an incredible job. Second thing is, town council approved the moving forward with the master plan agreement, so we have done that and with Wooden Partners, and we're working on holding a community engagement session during the first weekend in December. I'm working out the details on that, so we'll have more to come. And that's all I have. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Questions from council? All right, part I tonight is approval of minutes from the town council regular meeting on September 25th, 2023, and the town council's special call meeting, September 6th, 2023. Any amendments? Or a motion to approve those presented? Please, go ahead.
Make a motion to approve the minutes that's presented with one correction, and that would be what Councilman Bartman referred to earlier. Mayor Franklin was just having to excuse that.
Any other changes?
That amendment, I second it.
So a properly motion and seconded to approve the minutes as amended. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Thank you. Part two tonight, action items, and as always, we have citizen testimony regarding action items as each item is presented, so just signify if you'd like to speak, and I'll call on you. Part eight is Resolution 2023 dot 002, a resolution to approve the municipal state highway project agreement with the South Carolina Department of Transportation for new roads associated with Scout Motors. Mr. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So SCDOT is asking the town to sign this agreement that it, that the town approves and is committed to assist in the construction of the major road construction projects associated with Scout Motors to include the new interchange of I-77, new railroad crossing over I-77, and the realignment of Wilson Boulevard to allow the railroad to cross to the west to get to the interstate, as well as the relocation of multiple utilities, both underground and overhead. And I'm sure y'all may have some questions on this. Mr. Brooks Bickley from DOT, who is the project lead for this, all of these projects, is here tonight, and he can answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Bickley, welcome. You want to?
I don't have anything prepared. If anybody has any questions.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I saw.
Please.
Obviously, these projects will not run concurrent. Do you, do you have somewhat of a schedule of when they will start?
Projects, I'm sorry.
So the, the four bullet points that were being presented for discussion, those encompass multiple projects. Am I correct? And, and I think what I'm after is, do you know when the beginning of the first project will be anticipated? And the ending of the last project would be? So pretty much the scope.
Yes. So currently, I guess, we are, we are in procurement for the interchange and the connecting road that goes from I-77 to US 22. We begin procurement of that section. That will be starting procurement in April and, I'm sorry, in November and ending in April. And we will be getting construction in late summer for that section. And then the railroad bridge will actually be a separate project that will be beginning construction in the, I guess, late summer as well, and that will have a one-year construction time, basically. I think we also have right now, the penny program, Richardson County has the roundabout happening of our Blythewood Road along with the widening of Blythewood Road, and those are both under construction right now. Don't have a completion date for that. I don't have a completion date for that. That penny, I could get it with. But I guess those would be the main, my main understandings of the different projects. And then you've got the Scout proper site development, which is scheduled to, they're supposed to start rolling the car on the line in November 26.
And then the only other one would be the widening of Community Road. Do you know when they'll start that?
So that will run concurrent with our construction and will be complete by November 26. Yeah, we're going to, we will be tying the, the new interchange will tie to those two widening projects together.
And so that is being handled by Richardson County, the extension of the widening of Blythewood Road down to Muller Road and the widening of Community Road and tying in with everything is being handled by Richardson County.
What is the purpose of the resolution?
I think this, well, you guys probably have a better understanding than I have. I can tell more.
You can go ahead.
My understanding is that we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page with this agreement, that the project is moving forward and that you guys are in agreement that it's all, we want this to happen, and we're trying to work together on it. That's my understanding. If I'm wrong.
Yeah, that's essentially that we're going to assist in, and I put in my memo that by assisting, try to keep everyone informed, try to minimize the upheaval that's going to happen in 2024, 2025. All this is all under construction. And try as best we can to inform the drivers when the construction's going on that they can't get by or something. But it, the main thing, I think, is these are, this is a standard agreement that they'll have for all municipalities, and often municipalities have utilities underground. And so a lot of it is driven by the management of their utilities and them working with DOT. In this particular case, we don't have utilities, so we just want to be able to facilitate however we can is what the intent of the agreement is.
Mr. Bickley, can you leave that diagram so we can put it in Town Hall for citizens to come see? We can borrow it. We'll get it back.
Yeah, that's fine. I think you might have had some from when we had the scout meeting. There may have been anyone left, but yeah, I can, I can.
I appreciate it. I mean, you spent a lot of time putting that together just to sit for a period of time in Town Hall. If any citizens call us, we can ask them to come up here. Thank you.
And, and I will say, too, there's a, there's a number of sites that have, from the Blythewood, I think it's Scout Blythewood. You can access the DOT project website as well as, there's two different DOT project websites, the procurement and the actual project. So everything can be accessed from the Blythewood, the Scout Blythewood website. And it has all of those and more.
So a question to Mr. Williamson. So you, you've stated that there's no financial pieces that the town have to put in outside of general messaging?
Just letting the citizens know exactly what's going on, so we're going to keep them informed.
Correct. Yeah, there's no financial obligation with this agreement.
I also did pull up the schedule just to give you some heads up on the North Access Road construction, which is that north road inside the Scout proper that ties with the community. The construction on that is supposed to end in November 24. And the Blythewood Road, Muller to Soro Mill construction is supposed to be complete in 25. That's September 25. And also Community Road, that construction is supposed to be done actually mid-26, so it will predate our interchange and everything.
They'll be widening it as well for the scouts opening mid-26?
Mid-26. So Scout won't open until November, and realistically, they were saying, you know, end of, end of the year 26 is when they're going to start. But yeah, the construction will still be ongoing until then.
They're going to start until mid-26?
No, they're going to finish.
They're going to finish near.
Completion.
Comments?
Have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Want me to come up here?
Yes, please. Don't let, so I can hear you alone.
I'll speak into the microphone and ask a question to Mr. Mayor. Thank you. So my name is Trish Hobbs. So my question is, with all of the construction going on, I think that there would be a need for increased EMS or safety issues. I just wonder if that's part of your plans, because I don't know that we have that to sustain. This amount of construction and change and increased traffic and few citizens on the street to go, so the opportunity for accidents might increase. I, I didn't know if that was part of the DOT planning or if that could come somewhere else.
Trish is the first on that.
We definitely keep in, keep in mind the EMS when we're doing any road closures or temporary closures or lane closures. But as far as additional for the area due to the, the construction, that's something that I think our traffic and the county itself, the EMS would take into account. I don't know exactly what could be involved from our perspective.
Okay. I'm just not sure that we have the amount of, you know, first responders to support all of the management plans. I think that's important to address. I think that's important to address. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions to service? Do we have a motion to approve the resolution? Motion to approve? It's been properly motioned and seconded to approve Resolution 2023.002. Any further conversation? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it, resolution is approved. Thank you, Mr. Bickley. Part B tonight is a first reading, Ordinance 2023.015, discussion and approval of an ordinance amending the business license ordinance of the town of Blackwood to update the class schedule as required by Act 176 of 2020. Mr. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The town has adopted the Municipal Association Model Ordinance for Business License and fully complied with the South Carolina's Act 176 of 2020. This act requires that by December 31st of each odd year, each municipality must adopt the latest standardized business license class schedule. Municipal Association bases this amendment on recommendations from the Census Bureau, which makes these recommended changes of rate class on a specific industry's profitability. And also, the Census Bureau is not, is no longer recognizing peddlers with a separate status. That will change now, and this type of vendor will have the same rate class as a, so if someone, if a peddler were selling groceries, they would have the same rate class as a grocery store, and this would begin in license year, May 1st, 2024. So this is something that all municipalities are required to do to comply with this statute by the end of 2023.
Councilman McCombs?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
It's been properly motioned and seconded to approve first reading of Ordinance 2023.015. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it, the first reading is approved. Thank you. Part C tonight is discussion and approval to change the town council November 2023 meeting date. Mr. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So currently, the meeting date for November is scheduled for Monday, November 27th, which is the day after the Thanksgiving holiday. We've often shifted it to a different date, and, Mr. Mayor, you recommended maybe the Tuesday, the 28th, but I just want to give council an opportunity to change it if they would like.
Comments? I just wanted to move it one day, because a lot of folks go out of town, then they come back, and then, I didn't want to move it a week or before, so. Discussion, please.
Mr. Mayor, my own question there would be, if people are going out of town for Thanksgiving, is there any more benefit to move it a week versus a day?
It's not possible you put it into December, and I believe our town ordinance requires us to have one meeting a month. Is that not correct, Mr. Williamson?
I'd have to look exactly what, I mean, it sounds right, but.
If you back it up a week, then you conflict with the bar and the BZA.
I will say, there is no bar or BZA scheduled for November.
I think we should just keep it on the 27th. Thanksgiving's on a Thursday, it's not on a Sunday.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
There's no other objection, so I'll make a motion to approve the recommended day change.
You recommend the 28th?
Tuesday.
The 28th. Second. It's been properly motioned and seconded to move the monthly meeting to the 28th of November. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Part D tonight is State Accommodations Tax Committee appointment. Mr. Atul Gawain. Mr. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the State Accommodations Tax Committee, we currently have three open seats. Mr. Atul Gawain is the general manager of Holiday Inn on Creech Road. He's been there for two and a half years, but he's been in the hotel business for 32 years, and he's agreed to fill one of the seats on the board, and this term will end on September 2025.
Mr. Mayor. If there's no objection, I'll make a motion to approve his appointment.
It's been properly motioned and seconded to approve Mr. Atul Gawain from Holiday Inn Express to the State Accommodations Tax Committee. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? And we thank Mr. Gawain for volunteering his service. We really do. We'll move to open citizen comments tonight. We have Ms. Young signed up. Ms. Marguerite Young? All right. Thank you. Just wanted to double check. Anybody else wishing to speak who didn't have an opportunity to sign? Ms. Hobus.
So I was at the last meeting when Councilman Griffin voted present, and there was some question, and the attorney, I don't think, had a final decision on what that meant. So just as a citizen, I'm just curious. You said you exchanged email, and I wasn't sure what was in that, and I just wanted to clarify, what does that mean when a council person votes present?
Yes, sir. Mr. Baughman, please. You sent a memorandum to us, so.
Sure. Thank you for the question. There was an email about that, but I researched the issue and sent all of the council members and Mr. Williamson a confidential and privileged memo with my legal analysis of that question. It was my opinion that an abstention does not count as a vote. So, and the town ordinance requires each council member to vote on all matters brought before council. So in conclusion, my opinion was, an abstention is not a vote, so an abstention is not proper.
Okay, thank you. So an abstention equals present, is that correct?
Right. I mean, I think sometimes people just say present, but that's basically an abstention. That means you're not taking any position on something.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
It's been properly motioned and seconded to adjourn tonight's meeting. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it, we're adjourned. Thank you all.